Call to order, Dickinson City Commission meeting for June 16th, 2020. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Yes, there is some changes to the agenda. For under Administration Number Three, Item Three, we will add an Item B. That'll be Disclosure of Interests. And it'll be an ordinance that will be up for an approval of first reading. Then that would make the reports as a C. And under Reports, we're taking Number Three, the Odyssey Theater update. And that will be moved to the item under Commission, which is Item Number 10. And then I will be adding a report, which will be Civil Service Commission opening. And that would be all the changes.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the changes to the agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion on the agenda.
Mr. President, move to approve the agenda with changes.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the amended Order of Business, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under the consent agenda, are there any items that Commissioners wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion, I'd look for a motion.
Who to approve, Mr. President?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move right into the agenda. We do have a 5:00 call-in and public comments at 5:00 PM. So we'll move into this agenda. Mrs. Carlson, you have Mr. Maury coming up with the monthly financial report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. At the last Commission meeting on June 2nd, Administrator Carlson did give you an update on the revenues for the month of May. So some of the information in this PowerPoint will be what you saw in the last presentation. But we did want to keep up with our monthly financial report, so we do have a lot of the same information in there. Starting off with our Treasurers' Report for May 2020, you can see all of our accounts are pretty similar to where they were as of April of 2020. We're still hanging right around that $70 million mark. Same goes for Investments. We haven't had any major changes. All of our pension contributions were made in January of 2020. So we're still right around $37 million for all of our investments. Moving through the revenues, again, some of these were presented at the last meeting. To start out with our 1% sales tax, through the first five months, so you can see the red line is 2020 and the blue line is 2019, in the first five months, we were actually up about $99,000 over the first five months of 2019, which is about a 4% increase. But you can see in May of 2020, at the end of the red line, we're down about $37,000, which is just about a 7% decrease from where we were in May of 2019. The 1/2% sales tax, as a reminder to the public, we showed this slide because when we collect our sales tax, we separate them into the 1% sales tax fund and the 1/2% sales tax fund. So the trend should be exactly half of the previous slide you just saw. Moving to our hospitality tax, you can see again at the end of the red line, May of 2020 was about just under $30,000, less than where we were in May of 2019. So about a 31% decrease there. As far as the total through the first five months of 2020, we're down about $11,000 total, which is about a 3% decrease from where we were in the first five months of 2019. And occupancy tax, again, you can see May of 2020 is about just a little under $4,000 below where we were in May of 2019. So it's about a 16% decrease there. As far as the total for the first five months of 2020, we're down about $12,000 for the total, which is about 11.4% decrease for the first five months. And I believe Administrator Carlson had mentioned this one as well, but you can see in our Oil Impact Fund, the May 2020 collection was a little over $300,000 down from where we were in May of 2019. So it's about a 29% decrease there. However, the first five months of the year, you can see 2020 started a little higher than 2019 did. So just over $90,000 higher through the first five months, 1.7% increase compared to the first five months of 2019. These last two slides we wanted to add here, these are from the city website. And we just wanted to show the Commission that you can see, again, these are from the website. The general fund expenses, the red is what we've expended. So just about 40% expended through the first five months of 2020. And then with the revenue, the green is what we've collected. And we've collected about 57% of what we had budgeted for general fund revenue. And then the final slide, the same report, it's a circle graph for our enterprise funds. So enterprise funds, you can see, are currently 35% expended. And then in the revenue, we've collected about 39% of what we budgeted for 2020. So with that, if the Commission has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and city staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Maury on the financial report? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Mrs. Carlson, you have some reports for us.
Thank you, President Decker. I would be doing the new one.
You're doing B first.
Right.
So the ordinance.
The Disclosure of Interest Ordinance. And that was handed out to you, being that the new Commissioner will be coming in. This new ordinance allows the city to reenact a best practice procedure for disclosing interest for the Board of City Commissioners. This is something that I have been wanting to put into place, and the best time is during an election year. This process also follows the same procedure that is required when you place yourself on a ballot for elections. You fill out the same information. Another item it fulfills is the question that is asked each year with the audit if we have disclosure of interest forms. So auditors review all the minutes, and having disclosure of interest forms allows them to make sure that the Board is recusing themselves if they would have an interest or relationship to the motion that is being presented. So with that, I'd stand for any questions on that. It has been reviewed by Attorney Wenko, and staff is recommending the first reading of this ordinance to be approved.
Okay. And this will be 1694?
Correct.
Ordinance 1694. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? This is basically what we file.
This will go into effect with the new Commissioners when they are stated in as of June 23rd.
I think it's the same thing that we file when we run. Any other questions? We will have the public hearing at the second reading.
Mr. President, move to approve 1694, first reading.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick on 1694.
Second.
Ms. Walla?
Second.
Commissioner Walla with the second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now we'll move into reports.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The first one is just, most of my reports are informational. June 23rd, 2020 is the swearing-in of the new Commissioners. This will be a public notice meeting, and the time of this meeting, I'm hoping to set at 4:30 PM. The agenda will be very short, and I don't expect it to go longer than five. I'm just looking at making that announcement. I've got to put it up out there. It is per state code that we have it, you seat it on June 23rd. So for the new Commissioners that are coming in, so that they can be put on. And then we go through the committees, we go through the Vice President and stuff. So all that, and good financial books for reading, too. So that's what's going to happen on that day. So that's just information. Then the next report is Budget Workshop. June 30th is, I just wanted to mention that that is the very first day. So this budget session will begin on June 30th with the department heads. It's not involving the Commissioners yet. Then on June 23rd, meeting with the new Commissioners, we will be setting dates and time for the Commission to review of the budgets with departments in the month of July. With that, August 4th, the Commission meeting on August 4th, that is where I have to have the preliminary budget statement approved and send to the county along with the public hearings date set. So we only have four weeks to put that all together. So I will, on June 23rd, I will be presenting dates, times, and hopefully it works in the calendars, that we will have our first meeting the first week, starting the week of July 6th. And then get through the four weeks.
And we're going to start off with a revenue forecast.
Correct. The first meeting will actually just be Commissioners and the executive team, and that will be going over the revenue forecast of 2020, going forward in '21, predictions, again, predictions, I have no crystal ball, and then looking at our capitals. So that's just the report on that. The third one that I added was the Civil Service Commission opening. I wanted to let the citizens of the community know that there will be an opening on the Civil Service Commission, as Mrs. Soblick, who's been sitting on the Civil Service now, will need to step down from this Commission, as she will be one of our new City Commissioners. And I wanted to announce that anyone interested in human resource matters, such as employee concerns, grievances, HR policies and codes, job descriptions, et cetera, should go to the city website, dickinsongov.com, and fill out a citizen interest form and send it in. So that's what, we wanted to make that announcement on that part of it. And that'd be the end of my reports.
Okay. Any questions for, comments for Mrs. Carlson on her reports? Hearing none, we'll move into Engineering. First item up, we have a North Annexation Water Supply Project Cost Share. And that will be handled by Assistant City Engineer Marshick. President? I saw her earlier. Oh, there you are.
I'm over here hiding.
I saw you walking around before.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. The item before you is a cost share agreement with the State Water Commission for the North Annexation Water Project. This agreement would allow the City of Dickinson to have costs reimbursed up to 60% to a total maximum dollar amount of $856,400. With the decrease in the state oil revenue, these funds may not be immediately available. So staff will continue to work with the State Water Commission and our internal city budget on the timing of the project. The city engineering staff recommends approval of the cost share agreement with the North Dakota State Water Commission. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this agreement?
So this is basically the service area that was the last annexation that the city had, north of 40th, east of 22.
Any questions, comments? Now I'd look for a motion on this cost-sharing agreement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Steiner to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Marshick, you have a developmental agreement with Venture Homes?
That's correct. President Decker, Commissioners, this item is an agreement with Venture Homes for the market addition. City staff has negotiated this development agreement with the owner for a commercial subdivision at the intersection of 21st Street West and State Avenue. It's in the northeast corner of that intersection. This development agreement is in accordance with our Chapter 34 of the Dickinson Municipal Code and requires the developer to post the security in the amount of 130% of the municipal infrastructure cost. City staff recommends approval of this development agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this development agreement? Now I'd look for a motion on the development agreement.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Marshick, you have the Bluffs subdivision?
That's correct. President Decker, Commissioners, this development agreement is with Stickney Investments LLC for the Bluffs subdivision. City staff has negotiated this development agreement for residential subdivision located off of 8th Street Southwest in our extraterritorial zoning limits, near Hart River Municipal Golf Course. No annexation was requested or required through the planning and zoning process. Because there is no municipal infrastructure being installed with this project, 130% security is not required. However, the agreement does require the owner to pay 100% of the infrastructure costs that are being installed. This development agreement is also in accordance with Chapter 34 of the Dickinson Municipal Code, and city staff recommends approval. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this development agreement with the Bluffs subdivision? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to Public Works. Mr. Zurov, you have a reuse pipeline bid.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor Decker and Commission. I do have two items. The first one is a reuse pipeline bid. This project will extend the current 60-inch reuse pipeline from the Dakota Prairie Custody Point north along 116th Avenue Southwest, then west approximately 1,500 feet in the Highway 10 right-of-way. The end of the pipeline will include a meter vault, which will connect to our skated controls. The electrical portion of this project was over $50,000, which requires a separate electrical contract bid. The lowest combination bids received were Rachel Contracting for the pipeline and yes, electrical for the electrical bid. The extension has been on our capital project a number of years and is also city's contractual obligations with Meridian Refinery. Total of the combined bids are $901,844.58, which is 19% lower than the engineers estimate of $1,120,000. City staff recommends approval of the reuse pipeline bid, and I would be happy to answer any questions on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this reuse water line? I know this has been in the works for a while, and I think it'll be a good addition to that line. It generates more revenue for the city, so I'm looking forward to getting this done. There are no more comments or questions. I'd look for a motion on the reuse pipeline bid.
Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner, with a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Zurov, you have a water main replacement for 1st Avenue West?
Yes, thank you. This project will replace about 355 feet of 6-inch cast iron main with 8-inch PVC on 1st Avenue West from 2nd Street to 3rd Street West. The construction of the new bank, along with the need to discontinue numerous old service lines, made this a prime candidate for replacement. Water Utilities began budgeting for old cast iron main replacement projects last year with the goal to replace a block or two at a time and coordinate these areas that needed sewer, storm, or street replacement and repair. This project will replace the cast iron with PVC and increase the pipe size required by our water model. The street repair will be cost shared with water, and we plan to add this block to our current melan overlay project. Quotes were solicited, and BG Excavation Inc. submitted the lowest estimate of $50,908.30. That will be for installation of the pipe. The rest will come out of the budgeted $300,000 that we have budgeted for the main replacements. City staff recommends approval with a quote in to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this water main replacement? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the water main replacement.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a building code enforcement, and City Attorney Wenko, are you going to be handling this?
Yes, President Decker, Mr. President, Commissioners. Several years ago, the city and Stark County had discussions regarding the control of noxious weeds within city limits. And it was agreed at that time that Stark County would take responsibility for spraying noxious weeds within city limits. Based on recent discussions with Stark County, the city has made the decision to bring back responsibility for noxious weed control to the city. To do that, the city will have to reenact Article 20.08. The ordinance that you have in front of you contains language from the Sentry Code that outlines the city's responsibility for noxious weed control. It sets forth the statutory requirements that a city must adhere to and specifically sets forth the process of notifying property owners of noncompliance. The red language is the language that you see in the draft in front of you that has been added by myself to outline that the Building and Codes Department would be responsible for enforcement and that the city may contract for these services. The Board of Adjustment recently met and has agreed to serve as the city's Weed Board in the event this board passes this ordinance. This is the first reading, and the city staff recommends approval, and I would stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Wenko. Any questions for Mrs. Wenko on the reestablishment of the Weed Board? And this would be ordinance 1695. Any questions? We'll have the public hearing at the second reading? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the reestablishment of the Weed Board.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on the Weed Board? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into, although it's not quite 5:00 o'clock yet for the public hearings, so we'll move into Commission. Well, I can't bump up the public hearing for 5:00 for the...
Right. And mine would take longer for my report that I want to give.
Well, we have 5 minutes. I can cut it off to the public hearing, so if you want to present your report.
Okay. I can do that. Thank you, President Decker.
I'll just let you know when it's 5:00.
Okay.
We'll pick it up from there.
All right. So this is where I move the Odyssey Theater update, and I wanted to make a report on this. And I believe that citizens of our community did not understand that when the discussion of the parking lot was being decided on, that no matter what happens, those lots up for discussion will not be turned back into a parking lot. These lots will be developed as a commercial build and generating revenue. It has been the intent of the Commission that something would be built there. Due to the outpour of public input on the parking lot or bringing in a theater, there has been discussion of whether or not the Commission should or could reevaluate the decision made on June 2nd. With that being said, I leave it open for your comments and discussion among you Commissioners on, if you wanted to comment on anything on the theater. We have been getting numerous calls, numerous people coming in, in person, asking what's going on, where it's at, and I thought that this would be, as my report, a discussion that Commission could talk about. So I'll leave it up to you.
Okay. Commissioners, if you have any comments, you have about 4 minutes, and then we'll go to the public hearing.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
I'm happy to begin. When our last meetings concluded, I did provide an update and kind of got a lot of feedback regarding the direction the city took. And, you know, upon kind of reading into those comments, as well as doing some reflection, I think that with everything that was going on during that last meeting, this needs to be a decision that's made by the next sitting Commissioners, as it will either be property that the Commission takes back and has control over, or holding Odyssey to that new extension, whatever those parameters look like. But I think at this point, you know, if time is, if we have time, I would make a motion to rescind, and please, Ms. Wenko, help me with this, if I'm not wording it correctly, but I would move to rescind the vote that was made at the last meeting, so that this can be tabled until the sitting Commission has a chance to visit about this, or new sitting Commission.
Ms. Wenko, is that a proper motion for her decision?
Correct. If the intent behind the motion, as Commissioner Trustum indicated, that she would like for the next sitting Commission to make this determination, then the motion to rescind is the proper motion, simply because it will place the vote back at a time right before the vote would have been taken. If the intent would be to take that vote this evening, then a motion to reconsider would be the proper motion. But if the intent is to bring it back to the new commission, then the motion to rescind is the correct motion.
So we have a motion to rescind on the table. Any discussion or from other Commissioners?
Do we need a second?
Well, if there's no more discussion, then I would, I would look for a second.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion to rescind with a second. Any further discussion, questions?
I do have further discussion. With this motion passing, then any discussion later on should be saved till the next City Commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just make a little statement here and leave it at that. This board made two grievous errors that city government should never make. And I'm disappointed, disappointed in the board, disappointed in myself, that it actually got this far. And what I mean by that is that city government should... And what I mean by that is that city government should not pick winners and losers. And that's what we did at the last meeting. We picked a winner and we fortunately picked the loser, depending on which side you're on. Now, we're going to push it to the next meeting for the new Commissioners and they're going to violate their code of ethics the first meeting they come to where they're going to have to vote for a winner or loser. Now, where this should have stopped was the very first meeting when the issue was drawn up that the only thing that could be built there slanted toward a theater. No one else could buy that place. That was the first part of picking a winner and people that wanted the parking lot, the losers. That was the only part, the only place where you could have got a win, where we could have got a win-win situation. One, if we would have denied the theater from buying that property, you'd say, "Well, they're the losers." No, they're not. They didn't have a dime invested they could have built elsewhere. They'd be here, they would be winners. The people that wanted the parking lot would have their parking lot, they would be winners. We didn't pick winners or losers. We shouldn't have picked winners or losers. That is the way it should have went. Now, again, now we're going to be forced to pick winners and losers. City's going to be divided and that never should have happened. And that's why I'm saying, I have nothing against the theater, wish them all the best of luck. It'd be great. But government should not pick winners and losers. Unfortunately, my heart goes out to the new Commissioners that are going to be forced to violate their code of ethics. What's not to say that next meeting, I think we're going to take back three or four liquor licenses and give them to somebody else. That's picking winners and losers. I'm going to take back alcohol permits for some places. Picking winners and losers. Government should never be in that position, but here we are, picking winners and losers.
Any further comments? So we have a motion to rescind on the table with a second. Motion to rescind by Commissioner Trustum. The second is by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're coming up on the, we are on the five o'clock, so we'll go ahead and vote on the rescinded motion. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
No.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes no. Motion passes. Three, two. We'll take this topic up July 7th. All right, we go to the five o'clock. The five o'clock is a public hearing to increase on the public bid threshold in a city assistant city engineer, Marshick.
President Decker, excuse me, do you want to mention the phone number?
Oh, yes.
For public hearing?
Yeah, for the public hearing, that phone number for watching online is 701-456-7006. And there will be public comments after these two public hearings. There is additional room for those of you gathered. If you have something you wish to say, you can say it after these two public hearings that are scheduled public hearings. So, first up is the bid threshold.
President Decker, Commissioners, I just want to reiterate that this is the second reading of Ordinance 1693, which is in increase on public bid threshold. We're requesting to increase the bid threshold from $100,000 to $200,000 following the North Dakota State Sentry Code. This change would allow staff to make purchases and hire contractors for items that may need immediate attention without going through our standard approval process. The city staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions on this increasing the threshold for engineering? Any comments? So this would be, if I read this correctly, we already have ordinance on it, right?
Correct. 1693.
1693. There are no questions or comments. I will open up the public hearing. Anyone online that wishes to comment or anyone in the public that wishes to comment on our Ordinance 1693 to increase our bidding threshold? Anyone from the public? Anyone that wishes to call in? I think we have about a 10-second delay here, so we'll just give some people some time. And again, this would be increasing the bidding threshold from 100,000 to 200,000. So anyone from the public have any comments? Hearing no public comments or any concerns, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any comments on the increase in the threshold? There are no comments or questions for Mrs. Marshick, I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item up is a public hearing on the tobacco ordinance. This is the consideration to approve a second reading and a final passage of Ordinance Number 1689. City Attorney Winko.
Mr. President and Commissioners, before you is Ordinance 1689. As you see, this is a second reading. The first reading took place March 3rd. We weren't able to have a second reading, obviously, due to the COVID-19 restrictions. If you recall, these changes stem from recent federal law changes regarding the sale of tobacco products. Myself and representatives from the Dickinson Fleet Department met with representatives from the Southwest District Health Unit to incorporate some of their changes and requested modifications to get this up to date with federal law changes. The city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for Mrs. Winko on the tobacco ordinance? There are no changes from the first reading.
A few minor typographical changes, but no substantive changes were made.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the tobacco ordinance? This is a public hearing, so if anyone has any comments on 1689, please come forward, state your name, let us know your comments on our tobacco ordinance.
Hello, Jennifer Schaefer with Tobacco Prevention at the Southwestern District Health Unit. I'm the coordinator there and just wanted to say thank you to the Commissioners for bringing this ordinance forward for Tobacco 21. And I just ask that you consider, if not now, in the future, to look at the increasing the age for employees to be 21 that can serve and sell tobacco to a customer rather than the 18 that it states now, just for obvious reasons that minors do know where they can purchase it from friends that are, you know, 18, 19-years-old. So just something to consider. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jennifer. Anyone else from the public? Anyone from the public or online that wishes to make comments on our tobacco ordinance, Anyone from the public? There are no call-ins, no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, further discussion on 1689? This is the second reading and final passage, so I'd look for a motion.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions for staff on tobacco ordinance 1689? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will move into the public comments not on the agenda items this evening. You may call in or if you are in the audience, you may come up and discuss any topic that was, you felt was not addressed on the agenda this evening. So please come forward, state your name for the Commission and let us know your concerns. And also that I'll reiterate the number if you wish to call in, if you're watching online, Anyone from the public with any concerns that are not on the agenda or have been discussed and you feel that they need to be discussed further? Come forward, state your name for the Commission.
My name is True White. What else did you want to know?
That's it, ma'am. What are your concerns?
What am I what?
Your concerns.
Concerns, oh my God. My concerns is about my own comfort right now because I don't really want to be here. I don't want to talk about this. I don't want to make a fool of myself. I'm only here because I feel that it, too many are too quiet, too many citizens and, you know, then you get your picture in the paper saying, and you quote it and this and that. I mean, nothing about it is comfortable. And yet, I feel that it is our job to be vocal and that the people that are just over because they're old, playing cards at the senior center are, it's a cop-out. So I'm here to make a total fool of myself by saying lots of things that I had prepared but would probably be worse than just some improvised stuff. First of all, I watched the program, your meeting about the theater. I watched the whole thing and I thought it was done and then you came back to it and those last few minutes that you stated some whole different issues, totally differently, as you just pointed out. I didn't realize that you realized that we didn't know that you were thinking that that land is just for sale and it is definitely for sale. Some of you think that those of us who think that cars need a place to park downtown and have known that for 20, almost 30 years. I was on the original Downtown Association. We were chasing down the mayor then and putting signs on people's cars saying, "Don't park here in front of their businesses." I mean, we did all kinds of stuff. That was, and so this has been going on for 30 years, really, the question of what to do about cars downtown. Some of us really like downtown. My first house, the first house I bought in Dickinson is downtown and it still is there and that was back, anyway, maybe that doesn't matter. The point is that some people think that pointing out that if we are interested in business, that we should take every green spot, every square inch of downtown and make sure that something that brings in more taxes should be there and that a green spot or acknowledging any other historicness of our downtown is a waste of space, a waste of taxpayers, a waste of whatever, that even the park, I mean, then you pointed out at that last meeting that even that, you called it a doggy park? I mean, why would Manhattan, New York dedicate, I don't even know, somebody could look it up on their computer, hundreds of, probably hundreds of acres, thousands of acres to Central Park and take pride in the greenness, the use of that land in the middle of a city that is probably the most expensive, one of the most expensive in the whole globe? But we don't get to have the vision that green spots are of value to the city even if it doesn't bring in additional dollars. I'm an entrepreneur. I love business. I love business. I want to do business. But I also have a park. I've been trying to give to the city for 20 years, too. And the parks and recreation won't take it. City doesn't want it either of their, under their different, anyway, we need parks, we need parking places. I'd like to ask each one of you, when did you last try to park downtown? What do you know about parking downtown? Yeah, well, you built your own parking lot back here. Cost you a fortune and you're still complaining about what it cost, but you've got your parking. Well, other people don't have that parking. They need their parking and they are business-minded people. It doesn't make us some liberal Democrat to not, to seem as though we don't want business. We want business, even liberal Democrats like myself. So, you know, I have some, a lot of prepared stuff, but I can't read it and talk at the same time, so. Anything you'd like to ask me?
Any questions for Ms. White?
I think a lot of this city would like to have a lot more transparency about a lot of things because we figure, a lot of people in this town figure that the way that that land was sold in the first place, I mean, I think I gave a whole little speech about that. It stinks how that happened and we all know something's funny about it. Here we are, screwed, really. Nobody's happy. But don't call those of us who think that we should have parking places for the cars. I was in the library not long ago when the Governor was invited here. I like Governor. I think he's good. I think he's handled things well. He actually said in that meeting in the library about, I don't know, six months or so ago, he said, "Don't worry about having parking places in your downtown because in the future, we're not going to drive cars." Some of us still drive cars. Some of us still walk. We need parking places. If you want to park, if you want to have a park, take my park. I've been trying to give it to you for 30 years, plus an historic building that was Mr. Dickinson's home and it ought to be owned by the people. Why? Why not take it and let the future generations who have better vision than this generation and this bunch, let them expand their vision in new and different ways? Anything you want to say to me?
Any questions for Ms. White?
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. I appreciate your...
Ms. White, Mrs. White.
Yeah, you always come up with me.
I want to thank you. This is my last meeting tonight.
I know. I loved the comment you made last time I was here.
It's been 20 years. We were both younger when I started. And I've always admired you because you do come up and you speak the way you feel.
Oh, what a lovely thing.
And that's fantastic.
A little humanity, my God.
We missed you the last couple of years here, so I hope you come back and give these guys some extra.
Well, I'm trying. If the virus doesn't get me, you take care of yourself, too, and everybody else. God bless us all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Marietta Martin and...
I'm Marietta Martin, and I would like to address the commission, and I appreciate you guys voting to revisit the odyssey to letting them build. Mr. Steiner, I appreciated your comment, and I definitely see where you're coming from, because I think everyone should be able to win, and there's not going to be a winner, one way or another. But based on living here over 40 years now, and being in the theater business a good number of the years, not trying to date myself here, but the one thing that I have through each of the corporations that I have worked for is, people coming into the movie theater have always said, "There is not enough choices, there is not enough things to do in Dickinson." Okay, we need to try to keep our youth here, we need to keep our graduates coming back, being able to offer them something. We also need to think about keeping our dollars and our money spent in Dickinson, not saying, okay, we're going to go to Bismarck and spend the day, stay overnight. I feel that there is growth, and that Dickinson needs to think about both, having two theaters, whether it be uptown or downtown, or both. I mean, people coming in off the interstate can definitely have a nice evening meal, go to the mall, do some shopping, check out a movie, walk back to the hotel. If they come downtown to enjoy libation or eat, they can stop then, if we build our building downtown and check out our movies downtown as well. I feel that we want to move forward, not backwards. And I do thank you for revisiting this in July, and thanks.
Any questions for Ms. Martin?
Oh, sorry, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, I'm Peggy O'Brien, and I appreciate the fact that you are going to revisit, I mean, there's some things I like about it, and there's some things I don't like about it. And I agree with Marietta, it would be wonderful in this community if we were able to support two theaters, because neither theater owner is afraid of competition, so it would be great if we could. But realistically, we cannot. We don't have the population. The movie industry, the way it is run, and the control that the studios have over it, really dictates the winners and losers. And there's absolutely no way that two eight-screen theaters can make it in Dickinson. And I agree, keep the money in Dickinson. We have one local owner, we have an owner that's not local. And I really wish, in my, in the perfect world, that it would work, but it simply will not.
All right. Any questions, comments for Ms. O'Brien?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on items not on the agenda this evening?
Hello, my name's George Guzman, and I've been part of Dickinson for probably about 40 years, as well as Marietta. Long enough to know, one of my earliest memories of seeing a movie here, and this will age me, was seeing Grizzly Adams at the Downtown Theater when we had that. So, and I remember downtown being a magical place as a kid, where my family would take me, we'd go to Wolver's, we'd go to the pet store, we'd go to the theater, we'd go all over, and it was an all-day excursion. And somewhere along the lines, I know some people blame Walmart, some people, you know, blame the internet, it's probably just a conglomeration of everything, of how things go in business. Well, raising my family here, I run into the same thing, how do we keep our kids invested in our community? Part of my early life, I lived in a part of California that wasn't like it is here. And when I came to a realization later in life of where I was living, this place didn't have bars on the windows, it didn't have graffiti all over the place, then I realized, I was like, Mom, where were we living before we came to Dickinson? My God. We actually came here beginning of the first oil boom. So, seeing everything leave downtown, for the most part, and then seeing offices move in, as a teenager, you know, I accepted that, I knew that's just the way it was. And then eventually, the mall was the scene, and then all of a sudden, you see the mall not so much be the scene, and then they blame Amazon, they blame, you know, other things. Well, I know, seeing a chance for downtown to make a comeback, and from my point of view, back in the day, Wolver's was kind of like that focal hub that brought everybody in, they went there, either they went there first, or they went other places first, then they finished their day at Wolver's. We don't have that focal hub downtown anymore. We have the first on first, which always brings everybody out, and, but that's only a seasonal thing. So, I guess considering parking, that's been a front mind of everybody forever. And I had the unique experience of, out of high school, of my first job was working downtown, and my first apartment was downtown. It was a efficiency apartment above JP Frame Shop, it was the only thing I could afford. We had a community bathroom, that really sucked, that was my initiative to get a better apartment, which eventually would be, I rented from Joe Frenzel, he had an apartment above Work Command Center, and I know that they call it something else now, but I rented up there for a number of years. But on top of being a tenant of downtown, I remember when I signed that lease, and I don't know if this is a city thing, or if that's just what their realty did, but they told us as tenants that we are like a business owner down there. We're not a customer, we're renting a piece of property, and we were to use the lot spaces a lot of people don't like to use, over by the tracks, or around the corner. And also, the other unique experience is also working on the same block. My first job was when we tore out the blacktop downtown and put in concrete, I worked on all of that, I even got my initials etched in around the corner here. After that was done, I went to work for Rattlesnake Creek Brewery, and I also went to work for Leon Lors for professional printing for a number of years as a press operator. What happened is, when you live on the same block, and you work on the same block, you have to find somewhere to put your car. Well, my car was always across the lot, because I didn't go anywhere very often, because I didn't really need to. But as Mrs. White pointed out, there's always people leaving notes, threatening to have your car towed, it's like, what am I doing? I'm parking where I'm supposed to park. Well, the thing is, anybody who's being truthfully honest, as a business owner, or as an employee, or as a tenant of downtown, knows when people are talking about parking, they're not talking about lot spaces, they're talking about street spaces. Because I would sit there and lecture so many of my fellow employees, and sometimes I'd give my boss a hard time, because they would pull up right in front of the business. And then they would sit there and complain about, there's not enough parking. Meanwhile, I'm always parked across the street, and I would hear other people say, well, nobody else is doing it, why should I have to do it? I mean, why should I be the only one? And that's the truth of the matter. A few years ago, you guys did a study on downtown parking. And if I remember correctly, at the height of business hours, on average, there was 333 spaces available at any given time. Probably a lot of those were the lot spaces, because who wants to walk across the street, right? I'm not old enough where it's bothering me, yet. But my family and a lot of my friends are not opposed to, as some say, that they would drive to Bismarck to go to the Grand Theater. Well, when we talk about downtown, I've actually made the drive to downtown Fargo to make a weekend out of it, because they have their theater, they have the Hodo, they have all these great things, and it reminds me of how downtown Dickinson used to be. Or you can drive three hours south to Rapid City, which has got the same thing going, and we've actually lost businesses from downtown Dickinson to go to downtown Rapid City, like JoJo Beans was one of them. They've got everything going on down there, and it's a beautiful, amazing thing. And we have this one shot, to maybe give downtown a shot in the arm, to get some of that back. Maybe there doesn't have to be any winners or losers when it comes to parking in a downtown theater, because one of the things that Fargo did, and that Rapid City did, was their downtown area, to increase their parking, they doubled it by making, like our streets here, like Sims for the downtown section, or going, what is it, First Street West? They made those like one-ways, you would just go around the block, and then they had the sideways parking. And they're, it doubled the parking. Every single time I go to Fargo, I get a spot right away. Rapid City, you got to look out where you're going when you're backing out, but if you take a look at what their downtowns look like, and the businesses that have come in, the choices of going to shop clothes, or shoes, or restaurants, or coffee shops, and it's all there. We've got this one shot, who's going to come in and say, "I'm going to spend $4 million downtown to give you guys back what we once had." Downtown's kind of gotten stale. We, our kids don't hang out at the mall anymore, and, you know, they used to, they go, what, they had the Pied Piper, and I know that's a long time ago, but they had all these things, but it's just not here anymore. I mean, I'll be honest, there's been times when my kids are all done, and they're graduated, I mean, I talk to my wife all the time, like, do we, do we still want to stay in Dickinson? I mean, I loved it because it was safe, everybody knew everybody, it was safe for our kids, but down the road, it's like, the seasons seem like they're getting shorter for our warmer, you know? And, but, it's like, maybe if there's something better that we could bring back here, it would make people want to be part of it and stay part of it. And that's one thing we always hear about, is everybody that moves here, it's safe, and that's what they love, but we need that one extra bit. So that's all I have to say right now. If anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Guzman?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Not, there's no call-ins, I'm going to end this call. And we're still in, we never finished up with this public hearing, it will be closed on comments not on the agenda, we'll go back to the commission. Commissioners, do you have anything to state?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, to kind of, we were a little rushed earlier with the timetable, and I appreciated Commissioner Steiner's comments, and kind of wanted to share something after the fact. And that is, you know, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Steiner said, in that it seems like we're picking winners and losers, but I think this situation's very different. And I think it's very different to reconsider or rescind a motion based on kind of the circumstances of that decision. You know, we changed our evaluations this year due to COVID, and the market turned down. We allowed restaurants to sell alcohol through their door that we didn't in the past. We made amendments to help businesses in our community. I don't feel like the theater vote is about choosing if we think that project's going to be successful or not, because that's not our job up here. But I do think that we could have had more conversation about potentially offering that extension. And I had said in that original meeting, that I didn't agree with an extension in August of 2021, but I think the commission should consider one to the rest of this year, or whatever that would look like. And, you know, we just didn't visit about it long enough. And I think it was made clear that the intent of a few is that the property's going to be sold regardless, and that's never really been a commission talking point. We have never verbally said that if the city takes this back, then it will be sold, and it's going to have these parameters. And I think those are all really important conversations for the next commission up here to have. And when I originally put out my comments on social media to kind of share out what was going on, I made it very clear, and this is before the vote, that I thought that this needed to be a decision by the people that were elected on June 9. And I didn't know if I was going to be up there or not. And so that does not change by any means the direction I took. And I don't think it's setting the new commission up for win or lose, I think they just are going to have to do what they're, what you guys are voted into, is just make the best decisions you can with the information that you have. So again, I just think that it's important to add that, I'm also, you know, being it's my last meeting, and it's truly been an honor to serve up here, you know, I think we had originally the Downtown Task Force, and I think that there was so much positive that came out of that, maybe that needs to be revisited. You know, some things that we had talked about was potentially having, creating some solutions to these parking issues, whether that's timed, you know, spots where businesses don't have that capability to have eight-hour parking in front, you know, maybe it's two to three hours, or many communities have that, but I think there's a way to find some creative solutions downtown. Mr. Guzman, you know, mentioned the diagonal, I know we visited about that in the past, I believe Mr. Kubis said that's not a possibility due to our width of our streets. But again, it's good to have those discussions, but, you know, I think that there's enough passion in this community, and people who really want to look for solutions to some of these problems, and, you know, it may not be a parking lot, maybe there's other ways that we can, we can find to address some of that. But, yeah, I just wanted to add those comments, and good luck to the new commission and new commissioners. And, thank you, everyone.
Well, I would like to say thank you for what I felt when I came on, I talked about being a fresh, the fresh air to the commission, but I'm a lot older than I look, so I'm not that much fresh air. So I want to thank you for your four years, been invaluable, your voice on this commission is, I feel is very appreciated. You have a way of asking the questions that I think some of us just overlook, and I've always appreciated that. And I wish you the best of luck, I know you're not going away. You're going to, you're involved now with the school district, so thank you. You're going to keep fighting for us, I know we'll probably see you down at the legislature next year, fighting for the good fight. So you have a bright future, so.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that. And Mr. Steiner, I would say probably the longest-serving commissioner in Dickinson history. I don't know if we have historical documents to break, to back that up, but I think 20 years is a pretty good record to achieve. I know you've even served longer than that, being on the park board, you've been involved in this community, I think your voice is invaluable. You always have a way of looking at subjects, much like Commissioner Trustum, that some of us just overlook, and I've always appreciated it, and your candor. And I know you've always had the best interest of Dickinson in your heart, so I appreciate it. We have a little something, Mrs. Carlson?
Yes. From all of us, we want to appreciate the both of you. We really appreciate all that you've done, your dedication and your leadership for the city. So with that...
I'd hope that's a bottle of whiskey.
Close. I was hoping for doughnut.
Thank you.
I'll come over with my boat, I would bring you a bottle of whiskey, so.
Thanks very much.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to. Mr. Steiner has some...
If you'll bear with, it's only been an hour meeting, one of our shorter ones, so just bear with it, we're a couple minutes, you know, the standard thank-yous, and, but I do want to thank the people that step up to the city commission, you know, I mean, you got to go out, you got to get your signatures, you got to go do your campaign, and so, it's not easy, but you deserve credit for stepping up and doing it, because you always have someone that wants to take issues with you. And that's all right, that's all right, that's what a democracy is, and it comes all the way down to the city commission also. So I want to thank the past commissioners, present commissioners, and the future commissioners. I want to thank my wife for putting up with me. Sometimes I come home, I'm not in a very good mood, but I don't know, I'll survive. I want to thank the citizens of Dickinson, too, that have had their confidence in me for four terms here, and five terms here, and four on the park board. But lastly, and not least, I want to thank the employees for the city of Dickinson. I've watched you guys for 20 years, the city employees, and you never cease to amaze me. We give you instructions, you carry it out to the best you can. You take criticism from citizens... You take criticism from citizens, but yet every day you come to work, you put a smile on your face, and I know that's hard to do with some of the things that you're addressing and asked to do. But you are so professional and I'm so proud of you guys in the way that you handle yourself. I've known some of you for 20 years on here and it just amazes me that, you know, meeting after meeting, day after day, you come in and you do what's good for Dickinson, North Dakota and Alona. And if it isn't something that you agree with, you still do what you, the task that you were given. You do it to the best of your ability. And if anything for the people of Dickinson, when you see these employees, give them a thank you because they deserve it. They go through stuff that you don't see. They're under pressure and things are said about them that it hurts. And so, you know, give them a pat on the back, show your confidence in them and good luck, Dickinson. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, both of you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, anything else?
Mr. President, I just want to thank Commissioner Steiner. That was, I think he said it really well. And, you know, it's funny because I feel like him and I have really been at the, we butt heads a few times up here and people will ask me questions and I, I love Commissioner Steiner because he represents another part of this community and that's okay.
Thank you.
And I think that's really important for people to understand is we see a lot of arguments in this community and people on two sides of, are on different sides of the aisle, you know, that have different views on topics, but we still walk out of here with respect for each other. And I think that's the beauty of having variety on your commissions and your boards is because we all do have different interests and different thoughts on these topics. And it's important that we do have that variation. So thanks for keeping me on my toes.
Well said.
And I echo everything you said. That was very well done. So thank you, Commissioner Steiner.
Thank you. Good luck to you, too.
Thanks.
All right, commissioners, anything else? That's the end of the evening, so I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. We are adjourned.[1796.76][1796.76]